I have two resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing a lease of agreement with StepCG. This is for equipment to be installed in the Medina County courthouse. I think I have spoken to each of you, but the switches for the courthouse were...
Not us. So...
Yeah.
Let's get tuned, Stan. Welcome back. I can't name it from here.
The switches for the courthouse will not be in until March of next year.
Okay.
And obviously, we need switches in before then, and they had some older switches that were available that we could lease until the new switches are received, at which point the new switch will be installed. And the second resolution is authorizing an agreement with StepCG. This is for a performance of network health assessment.
Is there a motion?
I'm sorry. I was looking at the next one, and it's not Scott. I make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And thanks for all your work getting that organized, because I know it was a lot of back and forth and activity, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, department updates, Stephen Bastien. And I guess we've got a couple resolutions for you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stephen.
How are you guys this morning?
Good.
I have two resolutions for your consideration this morning. One is accepting and awarding the bid for the Medina County Administration Building's north staircase repair project, and that'd be awarded to Lawler Construction for the amount of $374,185. Second resolution is... Would be for authorizing the advertising for bids for the Medina County Human Service Center exterior repair project, which is the bridge and south entry.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
I will second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
It was amazing how far apart the two bids were.
Yes, so the high bid was the original only bidder on the first time we went out to bid, and then we had a second contractor come in when we went out to advertising the second time, so... Which was nice, obviously, we saved quite a bit of money on it.
Now, do you have a total estimate for the human service building exterior repair?
We do. $825,000 is what we're thinking right now, is what the engineer estimates are coming in at. We're hoping, obviously, for less money than that, but as our architects and engineers have informed us, they... It's like throwing a dart at a dartboard. They have no idea what the prices are coming in at. It's... They're all over the place.
Right. Okay. I guess we'll see.
We will see.
Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Anything else for us?
Department update.
Sure. Great.
So I can... I'll pass these out to you guys. Here we go. All right, from a building maintenance, cleaning department, and vehicle maintenance standpoint, our staffing for... All of our supervisors are attending the Leadership Medina courses that have been offered through the commissioners, so all of my supervisors are participating in that currently. Our maintenance staff, we are currently filled from 10 of 11 positions, so we are back to basically full staff. I have no intentions on filling that last one unless the perfect candidate arrives, and we'll fill that. And then, once the courthouse comes online, we'll start evaluating that need for that. Again, going back to that open position, and whether or not we truly need to fill those positions. We do have a project manager position that we're looking at filling still. From a cleaning standpoint, we have one full-time and one part-time position open, so again, we're pretty filled up there. A little concerning, obviously, with the courthouse coming online, we'll kind of evaluate what we truly need at that building as well. And then, from a vehicle maintenance standpoint, we are looking at... We have posted a position for a vehicle maintenance mechanic, so we'll hopefully get... We've got a couple candidates now. We'll hopefully get them in and get them interviewed and go from there. From a workload standpoint, building maintenance, we have done over this last quarter 1,257 work orders compared to last year at 1,239, and that's all PMs and work orders that somebody wanted a shelf hung. So any of those things that would be consistent with that. So overall, we're consistently doing the same things. Vehicle maintenance is at 171 work orders compared to 160 last year, and when you only have one vehicle maintenance mechanic, it becomes... That increase starts to put quite a bit of a stressor on that. So from other things that we've done, jobs and family services offices, cubicle move has been accomplished over the last quarter. We had to move the furniture that we acquired from Westfield from 177 Northland where we were storing it because of the Adam Board starting to build out that building for their services. I'm not sure what that service is, but we had to move that. Last few weeks, we removed quite a few trees from the county home, so that was a pretty good-sized project. We had quite a few guys on that. We've redone the Egress stairs on the south side of the county home as well. Their concrete had cracked, and the railing is actually separated, so Jeff and his crew is... And Dan have gone out there and started to repair that. So their crew is learning some masonry skills over the next couple weeks. So we installed the bus stop over at the Human Service Center, so Shannon had ordered that, and then we had gotten the ability to install that for them. And then, from a cleaning aspect, we have started cleaning the administration side of the jail, so just so you're all aware that we... They were doing that with inmates, but they were having some contraband get passed. I guess people were leaving contraband in places where cleaners would find, but not where the CEOs were finding, so they asked for that to stop, and so we started doing that.
There's a will, there's a...
Absolutely. From a capital improvement standpoint, I have given you a second sheet here that kind of just goes over everything that has been in this, but I'll give you an overview. We have repaved the 60 public square parking lot. We redid the 60 public square first floor, so Forrest and the prosecutor can get into that area and use that. We also helped set up the records retention area down in the basement. The Farm and Soil Administration parking lot has been repaved. The county home activity room, AHU, has been replaced. The highway garage exterior lighting and street lighting through that area has all been replaced with LED lighting. The jail entry renovation is completed. The jail, not on here. The camera system is also completed, or I know there's a couple touch-ups that still have to happen, but I do believe the camera system is also up and running. And then, the administration building, our office, finance office, has been... We did ceiling tile, lighting, and then carpet in that area as well.
Speaking of camera systems, and if you're aware of camera system need at the juvenile detention center?
I thought we just replaced that.
Okay.
JDC was replaced... Two years ago? Two years ago, I'm gonna say?
On the inside?
On the inside?
Okay. Because we just had a budget hearing yesterday with them, and they were asking actually for additional funds.
They need a camera system.
Because some of them said that a number of their cameras, like, 21-years-old.
I will investigate and get back with you. I thought we just replaced that, but maybe we didn't. Maybe we looked at replacing it, and we just never moved forward with it.
Yeah, it sounds like...
Let me get into it.
According to Ron Stolar, yeah, it has not been replaced, so I guess they would...
Well, I thought we did that.
Okay. Well, we need to...
I'll look into that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
From a current standpoint, right now, it's just in the development stage, but 72 public squares facade and window replacement. So 72, the cornice work around the outside of the building is in pretty terrible shape, so we've got... I've got a group looking at that to give us a full understanding of, unfortunately, a cost estimate of what that's going to take to repair. Administration north staircase, you guys awarded that going out to... Awarded the bid today. The county home boiler VAV, that change order has been approved, so I know there's just a little bit left to go in that aspect. They're gonna... There's four rooms that were missed. They're gonna attach that to something else, so that's gonna be happening soon, and then that project will be complete. The engineer... Engineer building at 791 West Smith has a rooftop unit replacement that'll be coming. That has already been approved. We're just waiting for equipment. Speaking of that, rooftop units, as of right now, are taking about 40 to 50 weeks to acquire, so if we approve it today, it'll be about a year before we start installing, so... Which is the rooftop unit that Amy brought up earlier for the jail is about 40 to 50 weeks out. Engineering roofing repair, we are currently doing. We had some wet spots on the engineer roof, so we are... Currently have a contractor out there getting rid of all of the wet spots and fixing those leaks, hopefully in preparation for next year of coating that roof and giving us another 10- to 20-year lifespan for it.
Is it asphalt or rubber?
It is an EPDM. It's a rubber.
Okay, rubber road.
Yep. Highway engineers, out at the highway engineers, the boiler VAV and AHU replacement is going on currently. They are... I think the VAVs have already been replaced, and the boilers are being replaced currently, so that system will come online. Again, time lags off of equipment. The condensing coil is not due to... Or the air handler unit is not due to be in until March, so the whole system won't be done until springtime next year. Human Service Center exterior project, bridge and south staircase, again, we just approved for going out for advertising. The jail chiller boiler VAV, that was the second part of Amy's change order for the chiller to get its own dedicated power. If we ever have to work on one, we can actually shut one down and bring the other one up and not have any power issues with that. The rooftop units for the jail were on resolution today as well. The parking lot is starting this week, so we are starting the... I think they're starting to mobilize all of the equipment for the jail's parking lot, so that will start tearing up and start doing base coating. I don't believe we'll have any kind of finish blacktop. It's just getting too late in the season, so we'll do all the base work and get that prepared for next spring to start actually finish paving. We've got parking lot expansion over that direction. There's a few things that have to happen over there, so that'll be happening.
So that lot's gonna be made larger?
That lot? The employee lot had to be... Well, didn't have to be... The employee lot is being made larger. Yes, by 16 spaces, eight spaces, somewhere in that neighborhood. It's not a lot, but enough for... They are struggling with their changeovers, so when shift changeovers, they just have too many cars in their parking lot. So their employee parking lot is expanding pretty... Not substantial.
So is it gonna come further east and connect into the visitor lot, or is it just gonna be still a separate lot?
Coming further east, and it's going to pick up... It is not gonna hit the visitor lot. They're gonna separate, keep those two separated, and it's gonna take up part of that... It won't take up any part of it, but the water retention area out there, that becomes a little bit steeper of a hill, and then they'll also be putting in a fence line to blockade the visitor lot and the employee lot, because I guess as they let people out, they like to walk through the employees' cars, and they want to try to stop that from happening, so there'll be a fence line that goes in there as well.
Okay.
The facility condition assessment and Predictor software, the facility condition assessment has been completed. They are working on putting all of that data into a few different things. One of them is Predictor, and the other one is our PM Maintenance, so they're going to retool our entire PM Maintenance software, so we can... All of the air handlers get maintained the proper way. They all have the same requirements, so we're gonna have that all as the same topics going through. And then, we're working with the OSU extension and the move towards 4046 Medina Road, so we're still working through some of the details on what needs to happen, what will happen from that. And then, from a standpoint, we will be working on the rest of the HVAC systems that have been approved through the commissioners for the ARPA funding. I have not... None of that is in here yet. This is all of the things that are happening as of right now.
So the facility condition assessment is sort of the next generation to what we did five or six years ago, when we started looking at facilities and assessing them and what the needs are gonna be capitalized, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, so this ALFA company came in, and they evaluated... They take pictures of all of our roofs, windows. They look at everything that we had looked at before, and they start putting it into a program. And then, once all of that information gets downloaded into a program, the Predictor program will start allowing us to... It will tell us which direction we should be spending money from capital improvements. It'll tell you where your biggest faults are, where your biggest problems may be lying, and help us understand where we should be spending capital improvements, instead of the commissioners just taking my opinion for it, because my opinion could be, "I really want an awesome air conditioner at my facility," and instead of that, it'll be, "This is where you should be spending..."
Some objective data, right?
Correct. Correct. So that's... Hopefully, over the next couple months, we'll have all of that back. I'm hoping by the end of the year.
Good. So then, maybe early next year, you could come in and give us a demo?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, we can... Yeah, we'll get it up on a board and have that ready.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Very good. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Planning Services Director Denise Testa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we have our planning commission meeting this week, so we're very excited to review two subdivisions and five amendments. For November, we are looking at a little bit of a lighter load, which two subdivisions... Or I'm sorry, one subdivision potentially, two with another map amendment. One of those subdivisions are... Is the Market at Medina Line Road, the Menards Project requesting a preliminary plan extension. Our next educational workshop will be planned for November. We also are... We are continuing to work with NOAC on the electric vehicle charging stations. Those are kind of on hold, I think, right now. I think they're trying to navigate some federal and state-based regulations. I believe they want the stations to be made in America, and I think they're having some challenges finding those.
Supply issues.
Yes.
We'd like to have them made in Medina County.
That's right. Kimberly, can you make that happen? Just kidding. No pressure. Okay. Also, continuing our efforts with Fair Housing, continuing to work with individual clients as well as participate in the Fair Housing Network. I'm pleased to say the Lowdy Playground, so one of our current CDBG projects, thanks to Jeremy and our Parks District, as well as the Prosecutor's Office, that is moving forward. It will be installed in the... Probably, we're thinking, early spring of next year. So upon ordering those... That equipment, it's about a 12-week lead time, so we don't think we're gonna get that done this fall, but it will be done in time to meet the deadline that was set for us. So we're very excited about that. Still working on the Lowdy Fountain Repair. That has been a challenge, trying to find a contractor to complete that work, so we're going to continue to try to find someone to complete that job. The Wadsworth Lyman Sidewalk, that has been replaced. The Montville Township Cobblestone Park pathway, we're continuing to work with Montville on that, as those... That price has gone up pretty significantly as well. Critical infrastructure in Chippewa Lake, the first layer of Main Drive has been completed. I encourage you to go out and take a look at it. I've never been so excited to see blacktop in my entire life. And then, the Box Culvert, if it's not complete, it's nearly complete, and it's beautiful. I mean, I'm just so excited that more than just an Amazon truck will be able to cross that bridge.
It's as beautiful as a box culvert can be.
I am... I am not understating that.
Come on.
I am not understating that. In addition to that, our subdivision regulations review is continuing. We are waiting on some information or some recommended revisions from our county engineer, so as soon as I have a chance to review that, we will present those to the work group. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
Okay.
I am very pleased. You know, make fun of the appearance of the box culvert. That has been a big safety issue down in that area for a long time, so it's good to get it resolved.
So you can understand why I use the word beautiful?
Oh, yeah, I understand. I completely under... I've gone over that bridge several times and wondered if I'd make it to the other side.
The key is just driving really fast.
Is that right? So you can launch over it?
Dukes a hat.
I got it. Yes, there you go.
I was thinking more like Road Runner, but... Okay. Thanks, Denise. Laura Toth, our Office for Older Adults.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. I have a little bit... This will probably maybe be technically discussion session stuff, but I'm gonna go over it here. Based on our conversation last month, and actually, the suggestion from Commissioner Hudson, I spent a little time looking at population growth in the county and how that may be influencing our uptick in numbers, so I printed out a few of the findings. This covers Medina County for the last decade plus. According to the census, the population of the county in 2010 is 172,503. That number probably is not a surprise to you, with seniors age 65 and up making up 13.2% of that population for a total of 22,770. So if you fast-forward to 2021, the population of Medina County rose overall to 183,092 citizens, and seniors now make up 19.1% of that number, which is 34,970. So that's a 53% increase in seniors in the last decade. So, yeah, the number of seniors is probably influencing our uptick in services. And these are only statistics for people age 65 and over, and of course, we work with people age 60 and over. And in one of our programs, we work with people age 18 and over. So the population, as you know, has grown everywhere, but particularly, when you look at seniors, we're really booming. It makes sense why we're so busy, but with that number, you think we might be even busier. I mean, that kind of an increase, so I guess I should count on my blessings. While our number has increased in every program over the last decade, other than the pandemic, the growth has really been more gradual. I wanted to review these statistics to get everyone primed for my budget hearing this afternoon. It's an exciting time to be in this field, and since the passage of the Human Services Levy, we too have seen a dramatic growth in our agency and the number of programs and services we're able to offer. So I just wanted to present that for your review. Any questions on that?
I do have one.
That looks great. Thank you.
It is, it is. It's interesting, very interesting information.
We're aging. We're all aging.
Well, that actually is my next question.
I'm aging. Is that your question?
So... So what do you think's gonna happen in the next 10 years?
I think a lot of the population growth is due to the big influx of baby boomers turning 65. I think it's gonna be up... It's gonna continue to go up a bit, and it'll level out, and probably over the next 20, 25 years, it'll start then to go back down. Yeah. So we'll have to contract our services at that time. That's for the future director. Figure out.
Well, it's interesting how this correlates to the data that we saw last week.
Right.
And if I remember right, the one statistic was 67% of the households that were surveyed did not have children.
Yeah.
That's really interesting. And that's a big issue for us when you're talking about seniors, that they don't have children in the home, and many of them, unlike the last generations, many of them, their children, if they have them, are all over the country. They're not local, so that's another kind of makes things interesting.
The survey last week was a workforce.
Were a workforce, right. And workforce stuff, yeah. But I think you're talking to the home builders and so forth, and they look at the drive for people reducing the size, their footprint, downsizing. And as, you know, you start approaching those 60s, you don't have any children, and the tendency is like, "Well, I need to get rid of that big front yard, and I don't need as much space, and just enough maybe for the grandchildren to visit," and other than that, they want to downsize, and looking for local opportunities to do that is harder and harder.
Right.
So did the data show that less people are choosing... I mean, as data, as much as you can read into it, less people are choosing to have children?
Okay.
That's a question.
I know, I'm sure about that.
I mean, last week. Oh, okay.
Not in Medina County, I don't think.
Well, so the... Again, this particular statistic was focused on workforce in general.
The workforce, yeah.
They surveyed 800 households across Medina County, and in the surrounding five counties or so, and the data was interesting. I never would have imagined that 2/3 of the household surveyed would not have children.
Yeah.
That's really interesting.
I know.
For one reason or another. We don't know the reason, but they just don't have.
But it's evident the demand for seniors-level services is going to continue to increase for a good number of years.
Correct.
And thankfully, we've got the Human Services Levy that includes not only Office for Older Adults, but also the Mental Health, and we know in that category, and Job and Family Services. And we got all that, at least that spectrum of services at this point will sufficiently... Hopefully sufficiently funded to be able to provide those services.
It's also really nice and unique to have them all at one campus, as we send people...
Agreed.
And veteran services, too, as we send people to other agencies or...
Oh, yeah. All right. Very good.
Okay, so I also... We sent out a survey. I talked about that last month in preparation for our strategic planning, which is tomorrow. We got feedback on what we're doing and what we're not doing. A preliminary review has shown that we continue to struggle with name recognition in the community. People seek out the Office for Older Adults only when they have, you know, a need of... I don't want to say a crisis, but it's an impending crisis, and we'd like them to seek out services sooner and know more about us. We've done really well with media outreach this past year. We've increased our Facebook followers from 690 to 970. We're expanding our Facebook reach. We are over 125,000. That means people have shared and are looking at the items that we post. We're also... People are also searching us on Google with over 11,800 searches for Office for Older Adults, but we need to do more. We always need to do more. We need to do more outreach. So I know this will be discussed tomorrow, and will be part of our 23 to 25 plan. I hope that the group comes up with innovative ideas for that, so we will keep going on that. Upcoming events today is the Brunswick Talent Show, taking place at the Rec Center from 11:00 to 1:00. We are streaming it live on Facebook.
We'll be watching. We'll be watching.
That's right. I'd like to say I'm making my debut as a California Raisin, but that's not true, because in high school, I was in a skit, and I was a California Raisin, so this is my second appearance. It should be entertaining. Also, next Friday, October 14th, is our Oktoberfest. That's our big fall event. We have a polka band coming named the Schatzkies, who are... They play at Hoffbrahaus regularly, and they feature the Lake County Aging Director. His name is Joey Tomcik, so he's the director up at Lake County Office on Aging, and he's in this band, and they're really pretty fantastic. So we will have music, vendors, and a beer tasting. It's root beer, ginger beer, birch beer, and just added yesterday, butter beer. So this event is free and open to all seniors and community members. It takes place at... From 11:00 to 2:00 on October 14th, and people can call to sign up. And one last plug for... We have a community open house to show off our Medina Center, what we've done and what we're planning on doing in the future. This event will also be the release of our strategic plan, and that is on Monday, November 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00. You will all have... Be receiving personal invitations to that event.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
I know somebody that makes Schatzkies.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll talk more about that later.
All right.
Thank you all so much. Have a great month.
Very good. Great, thank you so much. All right. We do have a commissar resolution designated legal holidays for 2023. It's hard to believe that, yeah, it's coming that quick, we need to designate the holidays.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second and any discussion?
All of them are on, I guess, weekend hookups, it's the 4th of July.
Yeah, all Mondays, yeah, that's interesting. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, all right. Now open up the public comment. Anybody here for the public? Seeing that, we'll move on to discussion session. Jeremy, want to kick?
I have nothing to add for you.
Wow.
What the heck? What are the odds? Okay, okay, Scott, you have anything?
First, I just want to give you a quick update. I know last week, we adopted a resolution for electrical contracts for the county buildings, and we were able to get a rate of 6.77 cents per kilowatt hour, which was actually a little less than 6.8 cents, that was in the resolution. But I did talk to our consultant, and there are four facilities that are, cannot go into the aggregation program. The remaining facilities, there's a possibility they can go in the aggregation program, and so we're trying to work with Energy Harbor to make that happen. If that happens, the average cost for the electric for the, for county will be about 6.3 cents, so that'll be substantial savings for us. The other thing I wanted to talk about is vehicles. So vehicles are getting more and more difficult to find and to purchase. I know that the F-250s, which are the vehicles that sanitary uses, building department had a couple, there's going to be a three-day window to order those in October.
And this is for the 2023 model?
This is for the 2023 models, yeah.
Why only three days?
Ford is going to open up, I think it's the 26th, and it's going to close on the 29th. So, yeah.
Do they have only so much slots, and then first come, first served?
Yeah. And, and, and the, really.
Is there a limit per entity?
I don't think so, but if you order in the past, you get preferential treatment on ordering in the future.
All right.
The only problem is, is that they're not telling you how much they're going to So.
So how does the government even possibly prepare for those three days?
Well, that's what I, well.
Emergency clause.
Well, what I want to do is, I want to go ahead, and I want to, probably in the next couple of weeks, get authorization, probably next week, get authorization to buy or to lease the vehicles needed. As you know, the leasing program has just been amazing, we've gotten, we've recouped our expenses on what we've actually leased the vehicles for, plus we've actually made some money on these vehicles when they get sold, or are sold. So what I would like to do is, I would like to get authorization to go ahead and move forward with vehicles for sanitary, building department, and maintenance, and then when those windows open up, there's also transit needs a van, I think, and the sheriff's office is looking for another van to transport prisoners to and from the courthouse. I'd like to get authorization to do that, and then once those windows open up, to go ahead and move forward with leasing those vehicles. So just know that that, that resolution will be forthcoming.
How much of a commitment is it? I mean, if you're authorized, you say you want 10 vehicles and so forth, and you only then, as you go through the process, only actually get nine. Are you penalized, or?
If we order the vehicles, if we order, if we order 10 vehicles, it'll be because we need the 10 vehicles.
Why not?
But, yeah, you have to get the 10 vehicles. You can't go back and say, yeah, we only want eight. There's a greater risk that you order 10, and you get five.
And you only get five, okay.
Three years from now.
Yeah, yeah, really, it's crazy.
And whatever price to be determined.
Yeah, I mean, as you know, you know, we did, went out, and we got vehicles for the sheriff's office, and we've already been told that he's not getting the one.
2022s, right.
Yeah, and we still haven't really heard on the explorers whether or not we're getting those, so.
So Dan, if I remember right, you had a resolution, or maybe Andy had a resolution that we passed to buy one or two more trucks?
Yes.
Or at least order them.
Yes.
So should we not include, and I don't know, those Fords, or were those?
No, those were Western Stars, they're different company.
Okay, different company, all right.
Yeah, and the highway engineer doesn't utilize the leasing.
Well, do you all, the engineers' office, have Ford F-250s or 350s?
The stormwater department has some, but, yeah.
So what kind of shape are those in?
They're brand new.
They're brand new.
They're new, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually diverted, we diverted a couple of the trucks that we had ordered for maintenance to the stormwater division, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, really.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Amy, what do you have for us?
I just have one thing. So the finance department received the first draw request for the fiber project that's going to be funded with ARPA dollars, and the agreement that the commissioners entered into with the Port Authority outlined a certain dispersment practice. That was done before we knew how everything was essentially going to run, so in working with Mike Lyons this morning, he's going to propose an addendum to the agreement originally entered into that's going to modify that dispersment arrangement to match up with, it'll then sync up with what the fiber and Port Authority are asking that we be able to disperse. So that'll be presented to you, we hope, next week, so that we can go ahead and get that first $2.6 million draw managed before the end of the month. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, that's it for me.
That was easy, all right, cool.
So I did present you with a memo this morning concerning Medical Mutual as our continued carrier of our medical insurance. Just wanted to make sure there was no questions, and that we'll start proceeding with evaluating those rates and getting that information and approval through Medical Mutual. It'll be a three-year contract with them, so we'll definitely have them for the next three years.
I did not have any questions, it seemed pretty logical, and a good thing that you bid it out and got a competitive quote.
We actually did get more competition than we've ever had.
They came down.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
And I'd like to bring Dawn up so that she can present on the response to safety questions that employees had presented during our survey.
Okay. Sure.
Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning. If you could take one and pass it to me.
So as Holly referenced, we noticed that there were a few safety concerns that were brought up in the employee surveys, so we wanted to try to provide the employees a one-stop shop of where to go if there was an emergency, to try to flip to the appropriate page in this flip chart, and get themselves through that said emergency. So that led to the creation of the Medina County Emergency Response Guide, which is in front of you, and the goal with this is that the departments would place these in areas where employees are mainly heavily populated, break rooms, if there's a front receptionist area, somewhere where the employees can get to them pretty quickly. The overall plan for it is we have enough currently to send out to the county commissioners' departments, so we did share with them yesterday morning about this and what the plan is for that. The second piece would be, is to open it up to elected officials. I would reach out to those departments and see if they're interested in getting some copies. So I just wanted to say one plug to you is, thank you to Brian and Lisa for helping me piece these together.
Excellent.
I'd like to see every employee have one on their desk.
That would be overall nice, yeah.
Obviously, priority being in the workplace, everywhere, every office.
Yes, yes.
Really great job, I mean, really in terms of the information, and I know when you end up getting those situations, sometimes it's easy to jump, but at least have something that either a management or somebody in the staff can look at like, okay, now, we forgot we need to do this step too, and like, this is, this is awesome, and I'm glad that that came as an outcome from the survey. We're totally unaware, we really needed to address it, and this is really a good response.
Thank you.
Really good.
All right.
I would never have thought about the bomb threat part.
So if we're not going to give them to everybody yet, so since Rhonda has our copy here, I will give you my copy back, so you can give it to another employee.
Yeah, me too, I will take it.
I'm President of Born, I'm keeping mine.
You never know.
That's right, I may get the call, I may get the call that I have to deal with.
Rhonda just has to be here 24/7.
This is really, really good, really good, I'm very impressed, thank you so much.
It is.
Very happy. All right, let's see, Debbie, did you have anything on the public session? All right, see, did I forget Steven?
Just to give you a quick update, the courthouse, Gil Bane's trailer will be moving out today, so both trailers that were on the construction site will be off of the site, and the groundwork out there will commence from here, so they'll start, be doing all of that. Some landscaping has been placed on the north side, if you haven't seen, grass has been planted, and then all the flat work will start, so just so you're aware.
Looking good, I really.
To, any knowledge of any shortages on concrete? Are they still getting it quite readily, or?
They are not, but they are doing their best, so they are, there has been shortage, we don't have a lot of concrete that goes into that site. I know last week, they didn't, they were having troubles getting it, but this week, they had it scheduled to arrive, so hopefully all that concrete comes this week forward, so.
Super, very good.
Excellent.
Thank you, Steven.
Thanks, thanks for the update, all right. Anybody else I need? Denise, do you need anything else? All right. Well, we had public comment, but go ahead, yeah.
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
I'm honored to just be a rumor, because I haven't been here, that with Dan Hostetler leaving the Visitor and Conventions Bureau, with consideration of it being merged with economic development, and I'm wondering if that is true, or if that's simply a rumor that's out there. I was involved in founding it 31 years ago, I incorporated it, and that was with the support of all the hotels, and I hate to see it just become an underling under another department, because you need somebody very specific that knows how to get business, tour operators, working with travel agents, et cetera. So I'm just curious about that, if that's in the works, and if so, why? Or is there somebody going to be hired within that entity that's going to go out there?
The Board of Directors of the Convention Visitors Bureau made a modification, I believe it was early part of this year, if I recall correctly, where they ended up defining more clearly an arrangement with Medina County Economic Development Corporation in terms of dealing with the back office and a lot of the office, office operations. Overall, the board is an advisory board to the, I'll say designated individuals that oversee recommendations. There is now a very close relationship between those two entities, and with Dan Hostetler leaving, some of those functions are being assumed by some of the staff of Medina County Economic Development Corporation, but there still is a Board of Directors to the, of a group within the Convention Visitors Bureau. Likewise, they have, with the dedicated tax, lodging tax, going to that, likewise, they have the responsibility for utilizing the funding of various programs that have been initiated, and if you've noticed this past year, they've really stepped up in terms of their marketing and so forth, and that has been, I'll just say, because of a new energy that's been brought in with a lot of, they had a whole group of interns over the summer that helped assist at them, and they've branched out into so many areas that they've expanded quite a bit what the Convention Visitors Bureau do. There, I think there's additional planning and movement in this next year with that relationship and with the Convention Visitors Bureau. At this point, you know, Dan brought a legacy, and as you, he was the first director, he, unfortunately, because of COVID, he lost essential staff, certain functions weren't being able to be accomplished, and so they've been able to, if you will, help correct some of the, some of the issues that, because you don't have staff, you have a one-man show, it's kind of hard to keep everything going. So at this point, they've been able to provide the staff needed to keep those functions going, and expanding their presence within the entire county. And I know they have, they're a great asset, and has been to Medina City, but the intent, I think, of the Convention Visitors Bureau, as well as those involved in the Economic Development Corporation, to make sure that it's also an asset for Wadsworth, and I'll just say Lodi, and Seville, and Brunswick, and so forth, so that in other words, those partnerships and those events, promotion ought to be countywide, and I think they're doing a good job and moving in that direction, particularly when they're, they're doing the Medina, Medina-ing, is it? Anyway, they're promoting restaurants, and it looks better in writing, hard to say, but there's certain activities that they're identifying that I think they're expanding their presence, and right now, it's, you can certainly, I would talk to Kathy Brighton Booker, as well, as was Bethany, when you get the opportunity, and they can kind of brief you as to how that partnership is continuing to develop. But so it's, it hasn't been taken over, if you will, by the Board of Directors of the Economic Development Corporation, they're now basically, it's a synergy and cooperation between them, because the Convention Visitors Bureau Board still exists, and they're still providing advice. Oh, God, how do you even remember? And for, but we appoint several of those, but they're also appointed by other entities. So I think there's, that, that relationship still needs to evolve, but it's one to, basically, COVID, because the reduction in revenues is trying to recapture that, especially with promoting a lot more activities, and we're seeing over this past year, year and a half, a whole lot more of visitors coming into Medina County for all sorts of events. So I think there's a lot to be said with how they're moving forward, but also there's a lot to be done, and I know that they've been briefing us as to what programs they're trying to promote at this point.
So Stan, the answer to your question is yes.
Concern.
Okay.
I'll be speaking to hoteliers, you know, I'm retired now, I'm not involved in that sphere. We never thought that we were a second fiddle at Seville, they brought us many, many things over the years, and I don't see the potential emphasis from economic development with their expertise, whether it be Kathy, Brent, or Bethany, if not the same personality as a quote energizer bunny that works in a hotel industry or hospitality industry.
Well, they have meetings, I understand they've got a lot of discussions of the hotel industry, and some of the areas that we're dealing with had to do with actually, the original resolutions formed in the Convention Visitors Bureau were flawed. Likewise, the lack of collection of the lodging tax, and we're going to be addressing that as well, so there's a number of proposals, there is, we're actually looking as the Board of Commissioners to evaluate that. There's the B&amp;Bs that didn't exist back in the 90s that now exist, and so the board will be addressing that, and they're helping us work with the county prosecutor to do that, to make sure that the, that everybody that should be, if you will, helping support the Convention Visitors Bureau ought to, and that we likewise, how they're, so they're assisting us and the board in making those additional changes, and the, like I said, prosecutor office has been working with us on that. I think that within the next month or two, we'll see some additional resolutions. Certainly, Rhonda can give you the one we passed some time ago, when we did the update a couple of months ago.
Stan, Stan, I would, I would suggest that you give it some time. There has been, in my opinion, a reinvigoration of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I think you'll see that there's a lot more activity going forward than there has been in the past. And, you know, although I understand your thought about it being a quote-unquote second fiddle to economic development, it is really an economic development function of bringing business to Medina County, and so there is an alignment there that I think will work well. So I would, I would just ask that you give it some time, and, you know, I know you were heavily involved in it, and.
Three hotels paying those taxes to not only the county, but the cities, the villages, 6%, not 3.
Agreed, agreed.
Well, and.
But you want to see that money used for?
Well, not only that, Stan, but it should be applied uniformly across all similar entities, and we have found that it may not have been, and so that will be a source of additional revenue, and in a leveled playing field.
It will be used for the promotion of Convention Visitors Bureau and events, as is intended, and as the law provides.
And courthouse timetable, is it still the same now for December?
Yes, yes. Right, at this point, we just have a tentative date later in the latter part of December for an open house. But they'll be, the departments will be moving, as well as the judges, courthouse will be moving in phases. Did you want to deal with that?
Yeah, let me just.
Scott, okay.
So, yeah, so occupancy permit is still expected to be December 5th. Obviously, I'm in, I'm in the process of getting a timeline for the furniture move-in and the actual move from the 69 to the new courthouse. So I can't say, you know, on December 5th, you know, the 69 courthouse is closed, and now the operations in the new courthouse, because that's not going to be the case, but there will be that, there will be that transition, once we get the occupancy permit to start moving people and possessions and records over into the new courthouse. So I would, I'm hoping that operations courts will actually be in operation in the new courthouse in January, but, but, yeah, it's moving along quite, quite quickly and quite well.
All right. And so Stan, one of the resolutions that we passed, that Scott presented, was regarding switches for computer equipment, electronic equipment, and, and that was, had the potential for being a significant glitch, because the equipment that we desired was not going to be available until sometime in March of next year, so Scott has been working diligently over the last couple of months to find a workaround for that, so we have some temporary equipment, and then we'll transition to the permanent equipment.
All right, Bill, do you have anything or discussion?
I have one question for Denise. The fountain in Lodi, whoops, what type of contractor are you looking for?
We're looking for a contractor that can work with obviously concrete and also complete some plumbing for the main work.
So would it be some?
They might have to subcontract the plumbing, but the main work is concrete.
So the, and it's for the basin of the fountain, correct?
Right, it's to replace, I think, the basin.
So potentially like a pool contractor, somebody that does in-ground pools would be?
I don't know, we've never, you know, looked into that, but that might be, we sent emails to. We've never, and you know, looked into that, but that might be, we sent emails to 75 contractors in Wayne, Medina Summit and Cuyahoga County. So, and we tried to focus in on concrete, but we can certainly check it.
I would think that somebody that specializes in that would know how to fix it and maintain it and even plumb it. So that was one thing. The other thing is the NOACA annual meeting is this Friday and I will be in attendance up there, which is the reason I can't go to the maiden Medina County. But I will be at the social event later in the afternoon.
Noaca, maiden Medina.
Sorry, but.
But he'll be at the social.
I'll try to, I'll try to be at the social.
Yay.
That's all I have.
Anything, Colleen?
No.
Okay. I just want to bring up, we did have a request from Medina County Economic Development Corporation, Kathy Brighton Booker. 700 Liverpool as a, the new owners of that property are applying for the Ohio site inventory program with Jobs Ohio for their redevelopment of that parcel of that property. And they're asking for letter of support. I hope that you're all right with us, me signing that letter.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll add our support to that. That'd be good. I've got nothing else. Do we have a request for executive session?
I'll make motion to go into executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Move to second. Roll call, please.
Sweater? Yes. Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Jeremy.
You ready? All right. It is 10:55. We are out of executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to second.